Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone, to the town hall meeting. We're letting, getting it started a little late, just so we guys have a little bit of time to transition over here. So, we are going to be doing this. We didn't expect tons of people in here, so we can, we're just going to mill around. What I'd really love to do is, this isn't, it can be a really interactive session. There, this is some of my staff, some of the board, and I will be here. And if there's questions, comments, this is, this is your town hall in a way. And of course, we're going to do, in a little bit here, once we get everybody in here, we'll do the raffles and so forth. So, that's the plan. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Great.
Nobody's tired, or is that just me? I heard goods and great. I'm tired. Whatever. I'm full, though. Like, I'm full.
You don't get more than one way.
Yeah? Oh, yeah. So, what is, what's been one of your experiences here that you're going to go home with that you're full from and not just food?
Oh, I got one. Besides the wine. I would say, so, we drove from Canada.
She brought her own.
Yes. Drove from Canada, 10 hours, to meet these lovely people, finally, in person. We've known them for 14 years of the time that our sons have had the same disease. So, we've known each other their whole lives, or my son's whole life. Their son's a year older. So, we got to all meet. Our sons are hanging out. They finally got to meet. They've been playing together online since COVID, so it's been awesome.
What's the primary diagnosis that's brought you together?
They have microvillus inclusion disease.
Wow.
Like, same as Maisie.
Yes.
Yeah. So, we got to meet Maisie as well. Well, they already had met her, but I haven't met her, so.
We've known Maisie for years.
Yeah.
The fact that I know that disease.
Yeah. I've known her online for years, but that's it.
Amazing. Thank you. Thanks for that. So, I would say this is a real fun story, is you tell everybody, you tell everybody, like, your children, "Don't talk to strangers on the Internet," or whatever. And then, and then we encourage that here. That's a little ironic, don't you think?
You don't.
As one of our past president, one of Dr. Howard's patients, and former board member, founding board member, Don Young used to say, and I'm going to quote him, "I drink from my mixer because my cup is overflowed." And that's just exactly how I feel. I'm tired, but I don't want to miss anything. Yeah, swallow this. And, I know, I can't talk without moving my hands. But, anyway, it's, it's, it really is, it's just full of, full of love and, and respect and just appreciation for all that you bring to us.
Thank you. Let me get a few more comments here in a second, too. I also have some, like I said, some of my staff and some of our board here. One of the most common comments that I've heard this week is, "I wish I'd known Ole existed sooner in my, in my path." Anybody else feel that way? I know I did. I know I feel that way. And didn't know this existed. And so, that's one of the things that's really heavy on my, on my mind. And I know our board as well, is how do we get the news that they exist? Not just because we want you to come here, but because what we do is, what you guys are saying, is make those connections. We pull together, I love, I'm going to borrow that word Lucas shared the first day about the ecosystem. It's going to be the word you're going to hear now because it's the word that makes sense. And we pull them together, and more people need to know about it because they need to be supported sooner and earlier in their, in their diagnoses. So, that's one thing. Who else? Would you like to say something about, as a board member, what have you experienced?
You know, I've dotted down different notes that I'm going to take back to our team. I was fortunate to have a round, host a roundtable on line locks and learned a lot from the participants within the group. And, I mean, I think we all learn from each other. You know, God, there's all of these misconceptions out there about line care. And it's fascinating how it varies place to place. And so, kind of breaking some of that down with, you know, like, the logistics, but the nitty-gritty of what you're doing and trying to ask the question, "Why were you told to do it that way?" And maybe that's not a good way, and maybe that's why you're having these complications. But, but then, I also was able to take things back and, from the session, all of the sessions that I'm, I'm very excited about, and I'm, I'm thrilled to be on the board. I'm excited about the direction of the Ole Foundation. And I love the way we've been able to recognize what we've learned and where we've come. I think this whole 40th year has been just an eye-opening learning experience, and, and I'm just glad to be part of it and love to be here with all of you. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate it. I was just talking to somebody, sharing the story, and it's not mine to, to share, so I won't share tons of details of it. But during the fashion show last night, one of the little kids was sad that they weren't, they don't have a tube. That they don't, they're, they were the odd one out, that they didn't have a tube, they didn't have a wire. And I'm like, "That's the way that should be." Like, every now and then, you shouldn't be the only one. You, you should have that experience every now and then. I just thought that was just really sweet. So, I'm like, "I need that testimonial written down because I need to share that story." Because that's amazing, that they came in, they were like, "Well, I don't have a, I don't have a tube." Lisa, would you share thoughts of your experience?
Yeah. I've, I've been to Ole two other times, but as a board member, kind of have a different eye this time. And one of the big things that I've taken back is just, I feel like there has to be a way to get this in curriculum for healthcare providers, because I really don't think that there is any other way that we're going to be able to reach people unless clinicians are aware. And, you know, networking and one-by-one is great, but really, I think we need to get this in curriculum and, and as an important part of the team. You know, mental health gets forgotten a lot, right? It's dietitian, nurse, pharmacist, physician. And social worker or mental health professional doesn't get in there. But, it, within that same context, I feel like support system needs to be in there as well. And so, I guess, I feel like, from an advocacy standpoint, that's kind of on my mind and on my mission to, to kind of get this in curriculum so we can help spread the word more.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah. I don't know this for a fact, but I heard, and I'm going to research unless somebody else knows, and then you can do the research for me. But burn victims, for example, when they're discharged, is part of the discharge planning, is to be connected with a support system. Like, well, that sounds like a no-brainer. Why don't we do that? Like, that's just one simple example. Because you can't collect every single patient. You know, what you can do is you can streamline it through some of the clinicians. But I have a question for people about, one of the things that we tried to do differently this year, and you may or may not have noticed, especially if you're not, if you're new, you wouldn't notice this, but I think it's important that the patient or consumer or caregiver perspective is given. And so, like, Ally today, for example, she is a powerful person in an industry, I mean, in a, in a career, right? And she also is a patient. And so, she told it from that story. So, rather than it being, "Hey, let's have all the clinicians who we love and adore, and we need you, please don't leave, we need you," right? But instead of it being them telling the stories on our behalf, and then say, "Hey, let's tell a little bit of a, tell me a little about your story," and it's like an anecdotal, "Okay, now, let's move on to the real thing." As I, my team and I tried very hard to make sure that at least half of the speakers, the whole session, was by patients, caregivers, lived, experienced people. Did, did that hit well? Did I, did we, do, do you have, anybody have feedback on, "We need more of that, we need different of that"? Do you have any thoughts on that? Yep? Here. I can't hear you otherwise.
I know. Yes. Because the perspective from us, I mean, generally, we can all understand one another in a sense, even though the, like, the mental health part is, has, has, for myself, become almost more important than the healthcare part. Because I notice when I'm falling apart emotionally, you're definitely not going to take care of yourself or anything else. And I did find out, I'm so sorry because I'm nervous, Al, was it Ally?
Yes.
She's absolutely fabulous. And sitting in her thing, I realized that I need to, or I'm going to, I have to grieve a life that I, no, that I never had.
Yes.
A life that I thought I had.
Yes.
But I, I never did.
Pretending like that.
Yeah. I never did. I've lived my life pretending like I'm just like everyone else, per se.
Exactly.
But I'm not.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, I, so, thank you, Ally. It's, I guess, why my point was that.
No. Thank you for sharing that. Thank you for sharing that. I, I looked around because I was having my own feelings as we were going through, and then I, I looked around and I saw a lot of tears from various people at various times. And I was a little caught off guard, quite, quite bluntly, because I, ooh, here it comes. I let myself feel. And that's what powerfully hit me, was I realized, "I don't know that I ever let myself do that." And that was the aha, and that just went, phew, in my spirit. Because I'm so busy, like you are, trying to make sure my, my loved one has as, as normal as possible, is, like, while we were in the hospital, the last time, I was making reservations for Disney World. Like, I'm trying to, to balance all those things. But I never let myself feel the gravity of any things. I'm trying so hard to protect him from it. And then, the patients are doing the same thing. I'm just trying to get to the next thing that I didn't honor, and I didn't realize that until today. And I helped plan the session, but that was the impact for me personally. Does anybody else have anything? And it doesn't even have to be about mental health, but does any of the sessions that we've had, any feedback on how that went? Anybody? Or other topic? That's fine, too. Am I missing somebody? I'm going to hand the mic to Shaylee for a second. I'm going to ask you. I know, she's like, "What?"
Don't make contact.
Don't make contact. No. I was coming to you, anyway. So, Shaylee, I'll come back to you in just a second. Shaylee, I have a question for you, is, this is your first time attending, and so, what has been your experience? Just any, any, you can be specific or general as you want to be.
Okay. Well, this isn't necessarily about any of the things that I, like, heard from anybody that was speaking, even though those were amazing and very informative. But it was nice to meet people my age, like Jaden and Kelly over here that, sorry, that go through the same thing as I do. I have lived in Utah my whole life, and I have never had anybody my age or close to my age that knows what I'm going through. And my entire life, I've always wanted to know people that go through my same thing. And I had never heard about the, this foundation until Emily, that lives in Utah, had told me that is an ambassador. And it truly changed my life in the last two months. And I just feel so heard and understood. And I finally got to meet Jessica. I've been friends with her for over five years. And so, we flew to meet each other for this conference. And so, this was her first time attending, too. And so, we finally got the long-awaited sleepover that we never got.
In the safest environment, too.
Yeah. And when I was telling my mom that I was flying out here, she was so worried because I had never flown anywhere with my medicine, or, you know, never really vacationed. And she was like, "Oh, my gosh, what if you get stolen?" And I was like, "No one's gonna, yeah." I mean, I'm pretty cute, but nobody's going to steal me and put me on the black market who has a feeding tube. Like, let's be honest. That would not go over well.
We have a big market for those.
Yeah. Yeah. They, they specifically target us, for sure. And I, anyway, I was talking to her about it, and I had made the joke, I was like, "Yeah, everyone's going to be on feeding tubes, like, it's going to be great." And she goes, "Well, what happens when a pump goes off?"
Everybody re...
And I was like, I was like, "I don't know. I've never been around people that have, like, pumps, right?" So, then I was sitting here the first day, and somebody's pump went off, and I was like, "It's happening." And then, I was like, "Who is it?" Like, but yeah, it's, it's been really great overall.
Thank you. And in the morning, for those who are still going to be here in the morning, I'm going to be doing a session at the very end about advocacy. And I'm going to have her speak a few, few minutes there. We have some ideas on what, some things that, she's our summer intern, and we just met two. Again, you know, don't meet people on the Internet, and then, you know. Oh, I'm, what did you want to say?
First of all, congratulations. You guys did a great job. And the way the passion and energy that's come across is very obvious, so, nice job. I do think that some of these folks that I've met today and yesterday are really unbelievably successful because of their caregivers and the support. So, you know, even though I had a patient engagement, it's not the best word for their patient advocacy. There's, there's something that we have to incorporate, caregiver advocacy. Something about caregiver-directed retreats, caregiver-directed programs, caregiver-directed opportunity to bitch and complain it with each other, and just say, "This is hard, and this is a lot of energy." And something, that would be something, I would say, would be next level to maintain how successful patients have been, is that caregiver behind them in every step of the way. So, somehow incorporating caregiver, I know everyone does it, but they, it's not like official. And it would be nice to have a track that's just dedicated to the caregiver in some way. It's just a...
Interesting. It's, so, it's interesting to me, because I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to chew on that one for a little while, because as a caregiver, I immediately have a visceral reaction to that. Yeah, like, it can't be about me, it has to be about them. Like, and so, like, I'm going to have to sit with that for a minute, but I saw other hands immediately go up, too. Interesting.
Changing it a little bit, have you ever, Joan, have you ever gone on one of the morning shows out of New York?
No, we tried. We, in fact, we have the president of Ole, I don't read my, the president of...
No, you're good. You're good.
The president of Ole, Don Young, one of the morning shows, was very interested in him. They kept, you know, picking through the, at the wire, and...
We're looking at all sorts of alternatives and things like that at this point, is what's the best use of our time?
It was a national disaster, sort of. I think it was Timothy McVeigh blew up the federal building, and that took presidents for the news. So, you know, it's, it's really hard.
Yes, it was.
I think it's too complicated.
Time to try again.
For them to understand.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give a huge shout-out for the kids' club. My five-year-old's had an amazing two days, and it just, it's, it's awesome to see a bunch of little kids running around with their tubes. And you guys could just do an adult conference, and you take the time to plan and care for the kids, too, and I really appreciate that.
Awesome. Thank you. Somebody else had shot their hands up over here a second ago. And obviously, there's a few hits and misses this week. Lessons, some lessons learned. There were some little bumps in the road, like, you may not have gotten lunch yesterday, I apologize. There are just little, little things here and there that we're working on, and we really want your feedback. 100% serious, I need your feedback. Because I need the good stuff, because if it was good and you liked it, but we didn't know you liked it, we may nix it accidentally, right? So, I need to know, "That was great, we like that, keep that." And then, the stuff that was like, "Hmm, I'm not so sure about that," I need that feedback, too, because we can consider alternate paths. Sometimes it stuck, like, for example, I know that before COVID, we always had a buffet lunch, right? That's what I would have wanted, too. Like, food, food, that's what I would have wanted. It was literally the sandwiches that we got, or shrimp buffet. I went with the sandwiches. Are we going through stuff that we... You can take whatever you want.
Okay. The one, one thing that stood out, for some reason, this conference that I haven't experienced before, but there were a couple of presentations that could have really used some sort of trigger warning for people who, yeah, lived with skin and bones. So, yeah, that's all.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. I've actually received that feedback from a couple of different people, and I've already started brainstorming on some ways that we can do that. One is going to be, and we're going to need some help, right? So, we already review slides. For example, one of the things is, like, we'll require those slides to come in sooner so that more people can review them. I could have, I didn't review those particular slides. I could have, and I may not have seen it as a trigger warning, right? But somebody else might have. And so, we need more people from the community to do it. Or maybe we look at and say, "If there's ever photos besides living life, maybe there's a disclaimer." I'm not sure yet, so I would receive some feedback on that. But yeah, I've had several people actually talk about that. And so, thank you for voicing that. This is our conference, as far as patients and, or consumers and caregivers like ours. And then, we kind of need to dictate how this goes kindly, and we want everybody to come in the ecosystem, and we got to find that balance. But if, if there's things that made you feel uncomfortable, thank you for letting us know, and we will do our darndest to not do that again. Can't promise it, but I can certainly look into it. There's a comment over here. So, thank you for the feedback, because we, it's the way that we can improve. I would say, as I walk over here, is, the sessions this year were submitted by the community, chosen blindly by the community. I had nothing to do with it, I didn't see it. And then, we were able to plug in the different sessions, and we tried to balance it out with internal and parental and all the different things. So, there were people who didn't get selected, and then, there were people who didn't even submit. Well, we can't know you were going to submit. Right? So, I would encourage you, if you have a topic, if you have a session, you can start to, we're about to release that, you can start to submit that. And it will go through a blinded process, through a committee, again. And if you want certain topics and more of this and less of that, let us know. That's how we're going to do this from now on. I did want to let everybody know where a conference is going to be next year, except, I don't know yet. My plan was to have it done, and so, we could announce it. I got really close to being able to announce it, but not quite, so stay tuned. It will not be, should not be super long, because we need to start making plans. The sooner we can make these plans for everybody, the better it's going to be for everybody. So, stay tuned.
Well, first, I applaud Ole for having this town forum. This, you know, I attend a lot of conferences for my, my day job, and this is really helpful, I think, from a board perspective. My first comment would be, for those who are, you know, in high school or early college, to maybe have a young adults' board. There's a trustees' board and an advisory council, but it gives folks an opportunity at that age to continue it on. Secondly, would be, I, I heard the comment from Joan about the media. I would try and work with the local media where, where the conference is. That's been beneficial at other conferences I've been with, to get exposure out there and, and get the name. And then, my other comment would be around the ambassadors and having them interact with people a little bit more, or have more ways to interact with, with people throughout the conference. I'm an extrovert, so I'm, I'm open to it, but I know it's harder for others.
Thank you for, thank you for that feedback. Yeah, we definitely, and if somebody wants to volunteer, if somebody wants to look into those things, we have ole.org/volunteer. There's a form where you can submit. Even if you don't have all the answers, the questions right now, you can certainly submit that, and we can start to plug you into the right places. We take people from industry, clinicians, patients, caregivers, as long as you're in our ecosystem, you are more than welcome to come and volunteer. We need lots of help, right? So, I have a staff, like I said, of about four people. I mean, there's more, there's six of us, but there's, it's about the equivalent of four, and we get a lot done. So, we need a lot of volunteers to help support some things. So, I know that some of you are not here to listen to any of this. You're here because of the, "I'm aware," right? You're here for this. So, Tiffany, are you going to be doing this for us?
Yeah.
Well, come on over here. Drum roll. All right. Thank you. And then, what I would, I want to say is, all sorts of volunteers, all sorts of people have been amazing, but I want to specifically call out this beautiful, she said, "Uh-oh." We've never met before this conference, and I've watched her give of her whole heart, mind, soul, and body over the last few days. And I just need to publicly acknowledge how, how amazing you have been. So, can you just give her a round of applause? One of, one of our Ole ambassadors, so that's Tiffany, and so, she is going to do the honors of the raffle. And the winner is 844-991. I was going to say, it's almost, she wrote her name on the back, too. Oh, that's awesome! All right. So, now, you have to give a speech. Here you go.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Maria. I am Gabi Luna's mom. And it's, it's so amazing for me to be here. It's the first time, and I'm here to support my daughter. We, I have my grandson, Damian. He's six years old, and it is a journal since he, she was pregnant, that we know that he's going to come with us, a complication. And I learn a lot here. It's the kind of, you don't feel lonely. You feel after this conference that it's, it's more out there. And I said a little point, maybe it's going to sound like selfish, but it's like, oh, mine is not as bad as other. It's, it's, it's like, it's, it's nice. My grandson, yesterday, won the first place, the fashions. And now, I went to, to the raffle and, and meet all these people. I would like to say only one thing that is in my heart since, since Tuesday, that I'm going to put my heart, I'm going to fill it out the form as a Spanish translation volunteer, because I see a lot of, I, I know out there is a lot of Spanish people, community, that doesn't speak English and doesn't read English, and they need to know about this, because they're lonely out there. And, and I'm going to try to, to do my best to help Ole to reach these people out there, the mothers, the patients. It's, it's, it's fair for them to know about Ole and come to this conference. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Well, congratulations to you. And I'm sorry, does anybody else think that was rigged, her grandkid won last night, now she's like, mhm. How much did they pay you, Tiffany? Yes. No. What's that?
She deserved it.
Oh, I'm just messing.
The thing is, she came, she sent Gabby to my room the other night, no questions asked, bananas, mangoes, waters. Tell her, tell them to come for lunch, tell them. And she never asked a question, she just said, "Gabby, tell them, I have a salad, I'm going to make a salad for them." And no questions asked, everything was open to us, and she more than deserved this.
I actually agree with you wholeheartedly. Thank you for, for pointing that out. We wouldn't have known, but she's got a mama's heart. So, I can tell you, I had not met Maria before. She met me at registration in the very beginning and said, "I'd like to volunteer, I would like to do some Spanish translation." And I said, "Yes, please." That was as far as, like, that was the whole conversation. And then, she came back, I gave her a volunteer form, she came back and the volunteer form said, you know, "You have to be clinician, caregiver, patient." She goes, "I don't fit the qualifications." And I'm like, "Well, I'm going to revise the form, because clearly, you are part of our community, and, and the form is wrong." You're not wrong, the form is wrong. So, thank you for being a mama to so many, and we'll all adopt you as our, as our mama. And we, the board, when we met last year in November, was one of the things that is very heavy on our heart, is inclusion, right? And we can't talk about that with actually, without actually doing something about it. So, if we say we're inclusive and yet we don't include, then we're not really inclusive, we're just talking about it. And so, I don't know, very many of you know, but my oldest two are African-American, my next children are, are Caucasian, the next one is Chinese, born in China, and the little one is from Guatemala. The next one is Chinese, born in China, and the little one is from Guatemala. And we've got all the different special needs and we're, one's in a wheelchair. And so, like, that's, you look at my photo and say, that's my heart. OLE needs to, we've got some and we're getting there. We need even more inclusion of everything. And it's going to start with people like you who said, I will step up, I see a need and I want to do that. So, thank you again. Congratulations. Now, we're going to announce how much she won. Three dollar, no. Total was $600 even, so $300 goes to you. That'll buy some salad, won't it? There you go. All right. So, I'm going to just open it up to any kind of comments, questions. This is your last 20 minutes of anything that you want to say. If any exhibitors are still here or clinicians or anybody that wants to say something, if you have questions, I am all ears. Here we go. Thank you.
I'm just going to first say I'm not a good public speaker. It's going to come out squeaky probably. This is my first OLE conference and it's been absolutely amazing. I've been talking to these ladies on the Facebook group for four years and it's been amazing to connect with everybody and get to know everybody. It's been a really awesome experience. The thing I wanted to share, I was on the round tables. There were so many and there were so many I loved and they were all overlapping. So, it was so hard to make a decision what to go to. So, I guess my one suggestion was, I don't know if we could go to more, have them spaced out or something that way so you could attend 10 more of them because it's so educational for, for us as caregivers for the kids.
Again, thank you for that feedback. So, you're not the first one to say that as well. That's a, no, I need it. So, like, if one says it, eh, maybe, right? I don't want to listen, but the more people that say these kind of things, we, we really do want to listen to it. The, the real story is that was a submitted topic of can we do a rounds, a round table? So, Cynthia Reddick, many of you guys know her. She contacted me and she says, I know we've not really done a lot of round tables or at least recently, can we do, can we do this? And she submitted that and we're like, we'll see if it works. We have no idea. So, it was a theory, will people show up, will they not? And they did. And so, we know that this is probably going to be a popular thing. And so, now we're like, okay, now that we know it's popular, now let's, let's really get into it. Same thing the fashion show, like, will three people show up? Will they all? We don't know. Now, we know that you guys seem to love that. And so, how do we improve that? How do we, like, I already had ideas, you probably did too, as I was watching that. And so, yeah, so thank you, the round tables. We, we're taking that. If somebody wants to help be part of the conference planning, let us know. Again, ole.org/volunteer, right? And you can let me know how you want to help and participate. So, we've got one more thing that we're going to do and my Lisa is going to help us.
Okay. So, Andrea actually should be doing this because Andrea was the wonderful, organized the wonderful exhibit hall, but she's doing other things. So, I'm doing it. Lynn, you want to pick a, these are the scorecards that everybody did. Thank you all for visiting and supporting the exhibitors and for going around and.
You'll mix them up. I'm going to mix them up. And then you reach in and you're going to reach in and you're going to kill anyone you want. So, that way we know it's fair.
Right. And thanks again to all the exhibitors for being here and for supporting us by doing that. Okay. We have Olivia Scali. Where is she?
I thought that she was over here.
Yep, Olivia.
Congratulations.
So, if anybody doesn't know what the scorecard is, it's, everybody went around and some of our sponsors agreed to pay a little extra and be on the scorecard. And this encouraged the people to visit their booth and the prize was a $200 gift card.
Thank you so much. I'd say is, you know, we hadn't met since 2019, right? And so, the question was, will people show up in a post-COVID world? We didn't know. It was a question. It was a, it was a theory. And so, will people show up in the exhibit hall? They, maybe, I don't know. I was walking in the exhibit hall and I was like, the worst case scenario I can think of is the exhibitors all around and three people in there and it's cavernous, right? So, that did not happen. The opposite happened. Oops, I ran out of food, I ran out of tables, I ran out of chairs, now I got a new problem. It's a, it's a bad problem to have, but it's also a good problem to have. So, it became from theory into practicality. And so, these various things that we did to get people around, I watched people go booth by booth by booth and really interact and really engage. So, it, so one of the people came out, I may have told this story, but somebody came out of the exhibit hall crying yesterday. Did I tell this story? I'm tired and I can't remember what I told. So, she came out of the exhibit hall yesterday, she was crying and I was like, I'm going to beat that person up, who hurt you, right? And instead, she said, no, it's because it's amazing. I found things in there that I didn't know I needed and my life is forever changed as a result of seeing things that are in here. It was a really good thing. It was life, life altering for her. And I thought that, that, that's why we bring the ecosystem together. Our heart, the board, the staff, our heart is to say, what are the options? And I want to put as many options out there for people and you make the best advice for you, the best plan for you along with your team, right? And so, what works for somebody may not work for somebody else. I don't know about you, but this works for now, but I'm always looking for that, when this doesn't work anymore, what's my next plan? And so, that's how I look at an exhibit hall is what are their options, what could be, what should be, and so forth. So, does anybody want to comment on any experience on the exhibit hall? Just that you had an experience in the exhibit hall, maybe an interaction or a product that you saw, not necessarily by name, but just what did you experience?
Well, I know one thing we thought was really awesome and our kids really enjoyed was watching how the TPN was made. Like, that whole machine thing, they're just in awe. But just in awe of watching how the actual product is made and stuff like that, like learning all of the information behind the processes that help keep them alive is just really, really cool for them. And it isn't something you ever think about until you see it and then you're like, oh, wow, this is amazing.
Absolutely.
That is really cool. It's one of those things that I actually attended, it's called NHIA, so National Home Infusion Association, and I saw a compounding sterile thing that was going on in the back and because not everybody, even clinicians, had seen it. And I'm like, that's cool. Because we have no idea what happens, if you're on parental, we have no idea what happens before it comes to us and just how many layers and layers and layers and complexity that are on that. So, that's great. Somebody else? Yeah.
One thing that I noticed in the exhibit hall is you have frankly, a bunch of competitors in one room together. And instead of them kind of acting like, oh, this is my booth, that's your booth, it was like, oh, hey, you should go see him over there because that thing over there would actually really help you. Or, oh, my friend works for this company and she's over here, you should go look at that. And that's so rare in a space of a for-profit business. So, that really made my heart happy.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Yeah. Kudos, kudos to all of you guys. That's amazing. Andrea, so I'm going to throw this to you and say, what did you experience? She's like, what? Yeah. What, what did you experience? So, she's new to, she's not new to the space, but she's new to OLE staff and this was her first OLE. So, as a participant or as a, as a new staff member, any kind of experience, what would you like to share, your experience here?
You will have to. You know, I would have to say today I went around to a lot of the exhibitors and just said, how has it been? And the responses I got were amazing, that they said, this is my favorite conference. I get to talk to consumers and families and these are the people that matter. And I had several companies that said, this was a great reminder of why we do what we do. And everyone was so excited to talk to people and, you know, they're used to big conferences with clinicians walking around, lots of traffic. And they loved the meaningful conversations, the one-on-one, the talking about what kind of challenges and things that you're facing and how they can help and how they can adapt their products. So, that made me really happy, that people were over the top. One company said, I don't know if he's there, that they could have gone home after 15 minutes because they had such meaningful conversations right away. So, they were here and they just, they loved it. So, thank you for going around and talking to them because they were so excited to meet you, so.
Well, I'd say thanks to those exhibitors. Thanks for hearing us too. That's the thing is, is you also had a two-way conversation. So, we were bold enough to go up and listen, you know, talk, but you guys were also bold enough to listen and thank you for doing that too, two ways. So, yeah, the, he, he said, because I was there and he said, like, they had certain goals in mind, like maybe interaction, I don't know what the goals were, but like certain interactions and things like that. And he said, we could have left after 15 minutes, like, and that was breakfast yesterday morning. And that, that to me is just meaningful. So, we have about just like 10 more minutes left. Is there any, any last minute comments that anybody would like to? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Thanks for pointing it out because he's right in the light.
I'm a first-timer and I just want to say thank you to everybody. I learned things from every part of this meeting, from one-on-ones out there, from at the tables, from the exhibitors, from talking to people in similar situations to me and very different situations to me. I came with a couple of things that I was very apprehensive about and I think I have a path to go. And I even felt like in my limited experience, I was able to help some people by sharing things that I've learned in the past year. So, then just thanks to OLE, to you both, to everybody.
Thank you for sharing that. You know, you just never know who you're going to run into and who you're going to affect and they affect you right back. Isn't that amazing?
I enjoyed beginning to meet people, but I just did discover, it does not seem like there's much network, well, not a lot of people in my age group that's actually a consumer. Because I'm mid-30s, the friends I've found that I'll still keep in contact with, they're still going to be friends, even though they're in their 20s, but I'm in a total different stage of life. And I think it would be good if we had, you know, something for like my age group, but maybe not necessarily, it doesn't have to be the conference, maybe something better support group.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for the feedback there.
I just want to say I'm sort of out of my lane here, but every year, I'm, I'm on TPN. Every year there are more and more enteral things and I'm so excited because as a TPNer for a long time, we tend to overshadow the enteral side a bit. And so, I'm really glad to see that there's so much more enteral products and cleaning things and mixes and all that stuff. It's really great.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback. What we recognize is that so many people are, like, like my own son, right? You start on one, you go to the other, they trial back a little bit. So, those, so they're so interactive that you have to include everybody.
So, speaking of the exhibit hall, I find two things, not enough time to have conversations with, a conversation can last 20 minutes, 25 minutes, depending on how in-depth your conversation gets. Or let me rephrase it, mine can. And then, so, and I can't really attend the breakfast ones because I don't have cognition in the morning. So, that just leaves the afternoon ones available. And then spacing. In a, in a wheelchair, it's very tight, but, so those are the two constructive things, but it's awesome talking to them and I, that's the reason I can talk to someone for 15, 20, 25 minutes. And some of them, it was great talking to that I know I'll never use, some of the home infusion companies, but hearing their stories and sharing my story and where their company is and if I was in their situation, what I would do and appreciate how they're, they're changing or staying, deciding to stay where they are and not changing for a while so they can get some homeostasis was, was really rewarding.
Good feedback too. So, that's always a struggle is how do you get as many sessions in? How do you get as many, like trying to balance that ecosystem? And we're exhausted, right? And so, I'm not sure the solution, but it sounds like you just volunteered to be on my conference committee. No. I just, those are extremely important things, like how do we balance that? And then we want to also make sure like the exhibitors, was it too long? Was it too short? Do we need to do breakfast? Do we not need to do? Do we, we need to relook at all those different things and try to balance it as best we can. So, thank you for the feedback.
I'm a first-timer also. I, a couple of things, I really liked the round tables. The round tables yesterday, I liked the fact that today they were in separate rooms. And yesterday it was, at least at the caregiver one, I couldn't hear because there was so, the talking was good. You know, it was good to hear so much talking, but with everybody being in the same room. I liked the length of the sessions. They weren't too long, they weren't too short. I think the length was just right and just the amount, that there was time for the socialization. It wasn't just all sessions.
Thank you. Thank you for that feedback too. So, we're, we'll, yeah, we'll go over there in a second. I want to start to wrap this up in a second, but I'm going to come over to here to you because you're a first-timer. So, what's your experience been like? And then I'm going to head over there and then we'll wrap up.
Sure, yeah. Happy to share. First time at OLE, Stephen with Nutrishare. I mean, honestly Andrea hit a lot of the points. It was a really great experience because our patients are, and consumers are all over the country. It can be challenging for us to meet a lot of them in person and so, getting a chance to meet centrally was really great, to meet a lot of our consumers in person. And I think just like Andrea mentioned, it's really empowering for me and for our team to be able to meet everyone and kind of see what you guys go through and it's very appreciated. And then meeting a lot of new people as well and getting new perspectives, to me was super valuable and I've had a lot of opportunities to meet our consumers, but not so many at once. So, I'm very grateful for it.
Awesome. Thank you. So, as I head over here, I'll start talking about tonight. So, we're going to take a little, we're going to do a break. You're going to have some dinnertime or naptime, whatever you want to use that for, right? And then we're going to do a little bit of the breakout to different age groups. So, we're going to have Jam and Jammies sponsored by Abbott. And a lot of times people don't have the opportunity to, to do that. So, this is a fun thing for them and there's a certain age range for that. And then we've got teen time because we felt the need for that. We're going to take this under consideration for the, maybe the young adults, that kind of thing. I'm going to source some wine and cheese. There's other things besides wine and cheese. And then karaoke is going to be fun. I expect to see all of you there for that. So, that's going to be coming up tonight. And then don't forget tomorrow morning, what's that? Can you get that to me in a second as far as where all of those things are? Because that'd be very helpful because I don't have that in my head. My head is like leaking information right now. We'll find out exactly. I think the karaoke and the wine and cheese is on the 18th floor in Gateway East. I don't know where the others are, so she can let me know that. But, and then tomorrow morning, of course, we're going to do a little, a talk on innovation and then we're going to talk about advocacy because those are the last of the four pillars. And then we're going to do our walk and roll. And it's been renamed even because we're cognizant of not everybody walks, some people roll. So, we're doing a walk and roll this time and then we'll meet back in here for a quote picnic. We've gone back and forth on a couple of things as far as where we're going to meet. It depends on how hot it is tomorrow as far as how long and things, but so you'll, you'll get all that information tomorrow, but some things to look forward to. Who had a hand up over here? Somebody did. Oh, there we are. And then they'll get that information of where it is.
Well, it was great, great to be back after a four-year absence. And one of the, one of the things I always look forward to at, at each OLE conference is getting the, this year, I guess because of technology, they put the program umbrella, which saves some trees. But being a collector, I have all of the binder programs from the last, well, from every OLE conference since 1992. And if you're looking for feedback, I'd, I'd love to have, actually somebody did print me one with a staple in it, but I might not be the, the only one missing the program because I got up to go to the restroom. I, I'm, you know, I have no idea who, but somebody enjoys them just as much as me because when I got back from the restroom, my notes were on the table, but not my program. So, there, there is a demand for it. Yeah. But I'd, I'd love to see them back next year.
Yeah, it's online, downloadable. And what I can say about the app is we tried. It was, it was an idea. We tried some things and literally it's, it's just extremely expensive, extremely expensive to do it. And so, we, we got feedback that we needed an app, so we tried that. And then literally the day of conference, they did an update and screwed up everything on there. And so, we were playing catch-up the whole time. So, that is some feedback we'll definitely, who was over here? Raise your hand.
I just want to thank you. As a caregiver, as a exhibitor, as a volunteer, I know that a lot of times you've asked for feedback and you've gotten the good, the bad, and the ugly. And that's really a very vulnerable thing to do and I really appreciate that. And I just, a lot of times you get the. And I just, a lot of times you get the negative and I just want to say you guys are doing an incredible job and we appreciate you and thank you so much for all of your time and effort. And you didn't pay me to do this. No, no. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate it. And as we wrap up, I'd say it is definitely a team effort. I have an amazing team that is willing to jump in, do the last things, do the hard things, show up, stay late, do, do whatever it takes. And so I'm just really proud of our team and that includes our board, our staff, and our volunteer. So thank you so much for being here today and we hope we'll see you in a couple hours in those various sessions. Do we find out where? Here.
Oh. Oh my goodness.
You are the best back there. Thank you so much. Yeah, we need to thank the AV team again, the whole AV team. Thank you so much. You guys have been amazing. Thank you so much. We'll see you in a couple hours.